Is it? Steve, am I still audible? Can you hear me sufficiently from here?
Yes, now I can hear you. I think you were on mute still just now.
Great. It's six o'clock. Do we have one, two, three? We've got, we've got a forum, so I think we're gonna go ahead and get started this evening. We're gonna call the order of the City of Carlton Planning Commission this Monday, March eleventh, twenty twenty four. First order of business is a roll call. Amy, June.
Commissioner Jeremiah, present. Commissioner Nordstrom, here. Commissioner Terrell, here. Commissioner Bandy.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid, for night is we're good. Not mission. And Chair Stewart.
And then Robin Gex here, and Annette just is signing in.
Oh, and that Robin Gekin resigned.
So she's just here.
She's here.
So we have confirmed, we have forum. Annette, if you can hear us, welcome. Hope you're enjoying sunny Mexico. It's pretty much here. This evening, we're gonna start with the approval of the meeting minutes from February twelve, twenty twenty four, starting at page two in the packet. If there is anybody who would like to modify, make suggestions, please let us know right now. Otherwise, we would welcome a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
And that moves to approve.
Second.
Second from Miss Susie Terrell. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody angry about that? That is unanimously excellent. Thank you so much. First and only, well, actually, we're gonna do citizen comments. We have a couple of citizens here present. Were you interested in making a comment on a knowledge of that?
No.
Okay.
Listening.
Excellent. No in-person attendees? Does anybody out in Zoom land? It's probably just Robin. Have anything you wanna add? If not, there will be time at the end of our meeting for citizen comments. You can let us know that. We will move on to item number one. The only item receiving is the comprehensive plan update starts at page three of your packet. And I will defer to Mr. White right now. Correct?
Well, actually, Chair, I will. The presentation tonight for staff will be Mr. Steve Faust of Three J Consulting. So he will be doing the. This is a public hearing, so we do have a script tonight, too. So we'll wanna make sure that we read that. Yeah, so we have some things there that we would like to make sure the record is known.
That was good. Well, Steve, thanks for being here. You're my favorite kind of Faustian bargain. City of Carlton chair script for this evening's legislative public hearing. On the agenda this evening is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Carlton Comprehensive Plan, city case file LA Lima Alpha two zero two four dash zero one. Section seventeen point two one two zero two zero, the municipal code identifies this as a type four procedure for conducting legislative public hearings. The decision before the planning commission is a matter of recommendation to the Carlton City Council for adoption of the proposed comprehensive plan amendments. At this time, I will ask fellow commissioners if there are any conflicts of interest or extensions to declare. Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to our next topic, which is the order of the public hearing. We'll have a brief oral report from staff. Mr. Faust this evening addressed the planning commission will be followed by questions of staff from the commission. Thereafter, any person attending tonight will be invited to present oral testimony. Staff will then be invited to comment on testimony or evidence presented. Finally, the commission will close the hearing, deliberate, decide on whether to move, whether to forward a recommendation of support in the city council. We are now ready for staff to provide a brief oral report. This will be followed by questions of staff. Mr. Faust, the dance floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Good evening, planning commissioners, and thank you for making time for us on your agenda this evening. Tonight, we will be presenting the comprehensive, the updated comprehensive plan and associated appendix. And I'm going to, as you requested, share my screen for what I hope is a, is a brief presentation. It says right now that host disabled. That I'm not able to share my screen. Could we address that, please?
The settings are changed now.
Okay. There we are. All right. And before we get into the meat of the presentation, I'm just gonna do a little bit of review of where we've been over the past. I wanna say two and a, two, two years or so, two and a half years. And, and then we'll go to the meat of the comprehensive plan itself. So for the comprehensive plan, as many of you know, there's also work being done on the city's development code. But for the comprehensive plan itself, we had six project advisory committee meetings. Many of the folks on that committee are in this meeting this evening, and I just want to say a really big thank you to all of them. They really guided the efforts to, to craft this comprehensive plan and spent a lot of time doing so. So thanks to each of you for, for your guidance on this project. Also part of the public process, we received one hundred and forty-eight online survey responses. We conducted, I believe, more than ten community conversations among staff and consultants and and the PAC members themselves, and then hosted three Carlton Summit events to craft the, the comprehensive vision and plan. And a, a quick reminder, I'm not gonna spend too much time, because I think we've all seen this before, but the, the comprehensive plan vision says that in twenty forty-two, Carlton is a great little town with rural heritage and small-town character, a prosperous economy, neighborhood, or family-friendly neighborhoods, and a well-planned infrastructure. And we have in the vision statement, which will appear at the beginning of the comprehensive plan, we have a paragraph that we crafted with the PAC and with a lot of community input that describes each of these kind of four vision themes or principles. So in terms of comprehensive planning, just a reminder, we, we sometimes lose the, the thread of and the importance of these documents in our day-to-day work as consultants or staff or planning commissioners. Oregon statewide goals are achieved through the comprehensive plan. State law requires the City of Carlton to adopt a comprehensive plan and the zoning and land division ordinances that are needed to put the plan into effect or to implement the plan. The comprehensive plan must be consistent with the state Oregon statewide planning goals. Plans are reviewed for consistency by the Land Conservation and Development Commission. And once approved, that comprehensive plan becomes acknowledged and is the controlling document for land use, in this case, in the City of Carlton. Staff was provided a staff report on March fourth that includes findings of fact identifying compliance with state and local requirements for amending the comprehensive plan. Subsequently, you all received a supplemental packet with comments from the department of, well, from state agencies through the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And I believe Scott White later in this meeting will let us know of some additional comments that we received today from the Oregon Department of Transportation. Is that correct, Scott? We'll go over those later.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And just as a refresher, when updating policies in the comprehensive plan, we looked at a lot of different sources of information. We looked at the existing, the comprehend, the policies from the existing comprehensive plan. We looked at background reports and inventories that now appear, well, you will see are as the comprehensive plan appendix. We often look to other communities to see what other communities are looking at in terms of policies. As I mentioned, our project advisory committee spent a fair amount of time on these policies and objectives. And then we really focused the second Carlton Summit on, on comprehensive plan policies. And we also had a, a online questionnaires that did the same. And I'll, just one more thing that I'll say, when we approach, in, in, in terms of we, meaning Three J Consulting, our approach to comprehensive plans and doing comprehensive plan updates is generally that we want to make this document usable and accessible to the planning commission, to city council, to staff, and to the broader public. So one of the things we try to keep in mind is how can we consolidate policies and make them digestible and usable for the community? For example, current, the current comprehensive plan, I believe, has about seven pages of policies related to transportation. That's a lot to track. It's a, it's a lot to follow, very challenging for for folks to, yeah, to wrap their arms around. So I just wanted to say that that is kind of one of the philosophies that we used as we looked to update the comprehensive plan. We want to make it as usable for all of you as possible. So what I'm gonna do here is walk through the goal, the goal and the policies and objectives for each of the applicable statewide planning goals, which will form the chapters of the comprehensive plan. I know it's been a while since we went over this together, so we just wanna and, and staff advise that we kinda walk through all of these. And then you'll also see that I've added some slides to address or to, to present the comments that we received from the state agencies and kinda what we propose to do in those regards. So with, without further ado, each goal actually mimics the statewide planning goal. So there is strong consistency between these goals and the straight statewide planning goals. So I'm really gonna focus on the policies and objectives. So for goal one, citizen involvement, policy one is to employ a variety of methods to educate and inform community members about the planning process and public process. Objectives related to that include physical, making sure to provide the community with physical materials as well as digital options. The second objective, one B, is to make sure we're providing opportunities for people, community members of all abilities to participate. I'll try to keep an eye on the video as I go through, but if there are questions as we go, please feel free to interrupt me, and I'm happy to answer questions. Policy two says that the city will engage citizens in the planning process. How, how will the city do that? Through making sure there's participation from underrepresented populations on committees and commissions, using multiple forms of communication to ensure community awareness and involvement. And as required by state law, each city needs to have a committee for citizen involvement. In this case, that is the planning commission for the City of Carlton. And this objective says that the planning commission, at least one time per year, will meet as the committee for citizen involvement to review those activities over the past year. Goal two, the first policy is that the city will review and update or amend the comprehensive plan every ten years. We kinda went back and forth on the timing of that. In ten years is where the, the committee landed. The city will ensure that land use policies and procedures are addressed in the city's development code and other implementing ordinances, as we talked about, that is how the system is designed. And then here's an important one regarding land use planning. The policy says that the city will initiate a process to phase out the agricultural holding designation. So that is a rural designation that you do not typically find inside cities. And the, the challenges of that designation from a planning perspective is that the city doesn't know if that's gonna be residential land, or if that's going to be commercial land or industrial land in the future. And so we know that in in the not-too-distant future, the city plans on updating its housing capacity analysis, its housing plan. And we recommend that the city look at these lands as part of that process and apply other comprehensive plan designations to that land. Okay. So for those unfamiliar, goals three and four of the statewide planning rules are agricultural and agriculture and forestry. Those uses are rural uses, and so they're not typically included in a city's comprehensive plan. So we go to goal five. Natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. Policy one, protect and enhance natural resources through proper use, maintenance, and development. Objective one A is maintaining a healthy and diverse tree canopy and other publicly-owned vegetation. Should note, I tried to bold kind of key phrases, because it's a lot of words, so. Objective one B is to encourage low-impact development techniques that help protect the natural resources. Policy two, maintain and expand the city's open space network. Objective, the first object, objective A, ensure that there's adequate open space and trail development and high-density development. And objective B, manage open space areas for, manage those open space areas for their different value, linking citizens and visitors with the natural environment. Policy three, identify, as we mentioned, this includes historic resources, so identify sites and structures relating to the history of the state that should be protected or enhanced. Objective A, encouraging property owners to preserve and restore historic structures and sites. Objective B, register qualified buildings and structures on the National and/or State Registry of Historic Sites. And C, consider the reuse or relocation of city-owned historical structures as an alternative to demolition or redevelopment. Now, here's where we see the first set of comments from the, from the state. The first was, they would like to see the city restore two policies that were, that were removed in our initial scan of existing comprehensive plan policies. The first, saying that if archaeological sites are identified in the city, that the city will coordinate with the state Historic Preservation Office as required by that administrative rule. The second, to preserve and maintain creeks and floodplain areas as open space to provide a natural stormwater and drainage system. So the state said, we would like to see you may restore or retain these two policies. And in addition, they asked for us, for the city to add three policies. One saying, one is to apply baseline protections described in state law to sites on the National Register of Historic Places. The second, to provide notice to the Department of State Lands if development or a land division is in the vicinity of a wetland or an area of predominantly hydroic soils shown on the state wetlands inventory. And third, preserve the water quality, groundwater recharge, and flood storage functions of wetlands. I will just say briefly that the state kind of took and I have not experienced the state taking this in-depth review of a comprehensive plan in, in my past experience working on comprehensive plans. On one hand, it is encouraging to see that they're, they really did a thorough review of the comprehensive plan and made some concrete recommendations. We certainly appreciate that. So so, yeah, these, these are for your considerations. We recommend adhering to the state's request to restore and add these policies. And then we can go over these again towards the end of the meeting. I will continue on if there's no questions on that. Goal six, air, water, or air, water and land resources quality. First policy, protect air, water, and land quality from the impacts of development. Objective A, encouraging the use of pervious surfaces. Objective B, prioritizing onsite stormwater management, except where the city determines it to be inefficient or infeasible. And C, promoting land use patterns that offer opportunities for amenities close to residential areas to reduce vehicle miles traveled and associated emissions. Policy two, encourage lighting design and practices that reduce the negative impacts of light pollution. That includes managing city lighting so that they are only on when needed, light intended areas are not brighter than necessary, minimize blue light emissions, and eliminate upward-directed light. And then policy three is to participate in environmental quality planning efforts on a regional level, including with neighboring communities. We also had state agency comments on goal six. They first, and this was included in your packet, I didn't too much content to add to a PowerPoint slide. They asked that we add some information to the city's inventory, that appendix of factual information. And then to add these two policies, the first, development within the city shall comply with applicable state and federal water quality regulations. The second, respond to directives issued in a total maximum daily load implementation plan for any waterways within the city that are declared water quality limited by the Department of Environmental Quality. In my experience, these types of things are more often included in the code, but I don't see any reason why, you know, per state request, they can't be included in the comprehensive plan policies. Goal seven, areas subject to natural hazards. Policy one, concentrating urban uses on suitable lands that rather than in places that are subject to different natural hazards. Objective A, limit development in floodplains. Objective B, permit res, non-residential development in the flood fringe, which is the outer portion of the floodplain, if it satisfies local code requirements regarding the structures. Height, you know, above floodwaters, floodproofing construction, et cetera. Policy two, promoting earthquake hazard awareness and hazard mitigation activities. Providing residents, promoting, I'm sorry, earthquake hazard awareness and hazard mitigation activities. And then policy three, maintaining procedures to advise applicants for development permits of areas known to have potential natural hazards. Policy four, developing a disaster preparedness plan that outlines how the city will deal with natural hazards. Objective A, ensuring that key city services have the capability of backup electricity during emergencies and coordinating with other agencies and partners to ensure that critical services are provided during emergencies. We also had state agency comments on goal seven. Basically, what they've asked us, the city to do is to add information from the city. It's a mouthful, the City of Carlton Addendum to the Yam Hill County Multi-Jurisdictional National Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. So the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, that's certainly something we can do, is take the information from that plan, including mapping of different hazards, and add it to the background report or appendix. They, the second thing they mentioned was the potential to update goal, the goals, that same goal seven inventory, that background information with new FEMA requirements to address socially vulnerable populations and underserved communities, address equity, address community lifelines, consider the impacts of climate change, and address any high-hazard potential dams within or potentially impacting the city. This is a new FEMA requirement that's gonna need to be put in place by January twenty twenty-six. At this time, we do not recommend that the city do this at this time. We think it would be more appropriate to do with the Yam Hill County and neighboring jurisdictions at the ti, at the time of updating that natural hazards mitigation plan. And then the third is adding, I don't have exact language for these, but rather than referring to natural hazards collectively, the state recommended that we add a policy to address each of the six individual hazards identified in that natural hazards mitigation plan. And that's something that we can do as well, if, if you recommend that we do so. So again, we are, we recommend updating that background report with information from the NHMP. We recommend adding policies to address each of the six individual hazards listed. But at this time, we do not recommend doing additional work to comply with these new FEMA requirements, as the city has until January twenty twenty-six to do so. Goal eight, this is recreational needs. Policy one is that the city develop a high-quality, diverse system of parks and programs for its residents. Objective A, identify and reserve land for parks and recreation within the urban growth boundary. B, encouraging developers to dedicate park sites as part of the land use process. C, ensure adequate park and trail development and high-density development in neighborhoods. And, and I think this went along with the trails that we mentioned earlier. Kind of making sure those facilities are included in higher-density developments. Policy two, creating a network of shared-use pedestrian and bicycle trails for connectivity throughout the city. Policy three, coordinating with adjacent jurisdictions to plan for and create parkland and recreational facilities that might cross jurisdictional boundaries. Objective A is to ensure the adequacy of pedestrian and bicycle connections to local county and regional trails, so becoming part of a, a countywide network. And then policy four, establishing and maintaining a healthy urban forest by encouraging a diverse selection of trees and parklands. Some of these policies you're gonna see, you know, in the, in, in the coming months, you're gonna see code proposals related to some of the policies that you're seeing, seeing here in the comprehensive plan. Goal nine, which is economic development. Policy one, planning for an adequate supply of commercial and industrial land to accommodate economic development in the city. And objective A, identifying current and potential commercial and industrial land within the UGB and analyze it based on market factors as to its suitability for economic growth. Policy two, we want to encourage the growth of existing businesses and entrepreneurs and attract new businesses to recreate jobs with a range of wages. Objective A, supporting heritage industries like agricultural and agriculture and forestry. B, limiting the amount of commercial use on land within an industrial zone, so you're kinda preserving your industrially-zoned lands for industrial uses, which typically bring higher-wage jobs. And C, promoting commercial development in the downtown core that's gonna diversify that local economy, but be compatible with the city's small-town character and provide necessary services and limit large-scale commercial options. Policy three, encouraging local commercial development downtown. Objective A, seeking input from local businesses during decision-making processes. And B, ensuring land uses and transportation connections provide access for residents and support tourism within the downtown core. We're getting there. Bear with me. We're on goal ten. We've only got, we only have to get through fourteen, so thank you. Goal ten, housing. Policy one, permitting new development only when all urban services become available, things like water, sewer, storm drainage, solid waste collection, et cetera. Monitoring residential land development to ensure that there is sufficient residential land to accommodate long-term population forecasts. Policy three, encouraging a mix of housing types dispersed throughout the city and within neighborhoods, including attached and detached and multi, single, single-family housing and multifamily options. Policy four, encouraging the development and preservation of housing affordable to low-to-moderate income households. That includes protecting existing manufactured parks to retain those kind of naturally occurring affordable housing types. And reviewing development code to remove barriers to middle housing types like duplexes, triplexes, townhomes, and cottage clusters. Again, that's something that we're working on concurrent to this comprehensive plan update. Policy five, encouraging the development of housing options for people of all ages and abilities, specifically smaller, single-level housing options for aging populations and people with disabilities. Goal eleven is public facilities and services. Policy one, modernize and maintain municipal facilities in an efficient and cost-effective manner to serve the population and to accommodate anticipated growth. Objective A is planning, operating, and maintaining the water distribution, stormwater, and sewer management systems. So just getting more specific as to which types we're talking about there. Policy two, identify and promote equitable sewer water and stormwater assessment methodologies. Objective A, identify and remediate areas currently underserved by infrastructure. B, making investment to support, investments to support the equitable provision of infrastructure. And C, coordinating with And C, coordinating with franchise utilities to encourage equitable access to services, so that would be. Things like power and fiber optic and things of that nature. Policy three, examine, identify and promote energy-efficient and cost-effective method, methods to provide and maintain public facilities and services. Policy four, ensuring adequate and responsive emergency services. Policy five, this kind of is related to the city's streets as opposed to the other policies where we looked at. Other types of parkland, but establishing and maintaining a healthy tree canopy. That can. Be used in the city's streetscapes. And policy six, preserve and protect existing healthy trees and mature trees along streets, especially in right-of-way and planting strips. Okay, go twelve, transportation. Plan for a multimodal transportation system accessible to all users. Make investments to accommodate multimodal traffic on major and minor arterial roads. Inventory bicycle and pedestrian networks and plan for needed infrastructure improvements. Policy two, establish and design facilities that improve safety. For all users of the transportation system, including finding ways to minimize conflicts between. Cars and bikes or pedestrians, those different types of travel. Support improvements that make downtown inviting and access. Inviting and access to business safe and convenient for pedestrians and bicycles. Coordinate facility improvements and services with regional partners such as Yam Hill County and ODOT. And final, finally exploring opportunities to participate in regional public transit programs. To provide transportation services to local residents. So, we did receive some comments from the state related to goal twelve. ODOT today, and we'll kind of maybe read this into the record later, but. Asked that the city restore current policies, current policies. Preserve the function, capacity, level of service and safety of state highway twenty forty-seven, these are all related to highway forty-seven. Coordinate all transportation-related activities impacting highway forty-seven with ODOT. Conform to ODOT standards and practices. With transportation issues concerning highway forty-seven. And coordinate with the Oregon depart- with ODOT on all land use decisions impacting highway forty-seven. One other thing that was noted, I don't think, it didn't end up in the. The letter that we received from DLCD, but we did think it was important as. As you probably know, the city is getting started on an update to the transportation system plan. And we think it would be appropriate to add a note. Into the, this chapter, this goal twelve chapter that indicates that the chapter and its policies and objectives will be updated. When that TSP is complete, so that the two documents are in alignment. Goal thirteen, policy one, encouraging energy conservation and climate resiliency in new development. Through site, through a variety of different mechanisms. Policy two, encouraging land use patterns that locate various land use activities like. Residential, commercial, recreation and education within close proximity. Reducing trips and energy expenditure. Promote mixed-use development and increased densities near activity centers and along major transportation routes. Policy three, plan and solicit support for renewable energy sources. And promote and design the development of public facilities and housing to take advantage of solar energy and co- energy cogeneration. And the last goal fourteen, policy which is urbanization. Policy one, update and expand the urban growth boundary when appropriate. Two, encourage the location of housing to minimize the consumption of prime agricultural land. Three, encourage infill development to utilize vacant parcels and achieve a more compact community. And policy four, use intergovernmental agreements with Yam Hill County and other public agencies. To establish areas of mutual interest and coordination procedures relative to urban growth management. Okay, we, that is the proposed updates in the comprehensive plan and. Comments from the state through the Department of Land Conservation Development. And the Oregon Department of Transportation. The city of Carlton recommends that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan. And appendix, and appendix amendments to the city council. For a public hearing at their meeting on April eighth, twenty twenty-four. That would include support of exhibits one and two in your packet. And then additionally, as I mentioned, DLCD policy additions edits to goal five. Edits to goal six, the policies and inventory edits to goal six. Policy and inventory edits to goal seven, but not those requirements that are due by January twenty twenty-six as I mentioned. And then DLCD and ODOT policy additions and edits and to the background text to goal twelve. And if you so choose to recommend this for city council, we prepared a draft motion that you could use to do so. And with that, I am ha- more than happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Right, we'll initiate. Questions of Mr. Faust. And that's got her little yellow hand up, so Annette, why don't you be the first?
Sure, I just wondered, Casey Kula made a presentation to council in February. Regarding the cycle Yam Hill County bike trail. That'll be out by Panther Creek. Could we include that by name when we talked about the intermodal bike trails? Could we include that in the report itself? Since the presentation supposedly has been made to council?
If you, if that's a question for me, and if you all agree to that, I don't see any reason, as we're also making these, potentially making these other. Edits, I don't see any reason why we couldn't make that addition.
I agree. I agree.
We want to say that you're generally facilitating any other trails or anything like that, or we'll leave this for separate one?
I mean, it's the, the, the language that's in there is. Generic. And I think it would behoove us to list a specific trail that's in process. That council got the presentation on in the report itself. Obviously, and be open to others, which is why you have the generic language in there. But I think since this is already. Basically in process with council, I think it would be wise to list that particular project as well. In, in addition to, I'm not saying supersede the language, I'm just saying in addition to.
I, I would probably recommend we do it as an objective to the appropriate policy. So we can have a statement specifically about that trail if that meets everyone's approval.
I would fully endorse that. I agree.
Which, say that one more time?
Sorry, I was gonna say, so these are just suggestions, we don't need to make motions or, okay.
But Mr. Chair, I can recreational needs statewide goal eight and goal eight to the. I believe that's the, unless the commissioner corrects me, I do see policy two. Under goal eight here on page twenty-one of the. The draft document exhibit one that Mr. Faust referred to, I think policy two says, create a network of shared use pedestrian bicycle trails. To enable connectivity between parks, neighborhoods, schools and public amenities and so. What Mr. Faust was suggesting, based on the feedback received from a commissioner, that we would add an objective there specific to. That particular trail. Is that correct?
And Steve, I don't know if you want to do this, this is a terrible way to show you, but in their website, they have a little mini. Proposed trail. So you could just steal this off their website if you wanted to include it.
Thank you very much, I will look.
It's just cycleyamhillcounty.com.
Uh, Mr. White, as you know, I mean, there's probably someplace where we also could include it in. Twelve section, but I'm fine with adding it to goal eight as you suggest.
Okay, yeah, goal, goal twelve could be another one as, as well, speaking to trails there and again for. Goal twelve is transportation, goal eight is recreation. Either way.
Used for both, right?
Well, actually, it wouldn't be used for transportation. It's a, it's a recreational trail.
It's a recreational trail, but when we talk about parks and bike trails. And I think I'd brought this up two meetings ago. When we were looking at, nothing to do with you, Steve, but just to give you a little background, we were looking at subdivision approval. And there's a railroad right-of-way that cuts through Carlton. That the current Yam Hill County Board of Commissioners put the kibosh on the Yam Halas Trail. And so it, it leads to all kinds of problems in terms of being able to access highway forty-seven from these new and improved subdivisions. Because you still have that easement. And it's just sort of this weird no man's land. So that's come up in our purview in various other topics, but because this is a specific. In-process recreational trail. That will be accessible up on Panther Creek. I would, I would like to see Cycle Yam Hill County named in the actual report.
Understood, and the logic behind doing it in the goal eight chapter makes perfect sense, so thank you.
Thank you.
With those comments, are there any vehement objections or even tepid objections? Thank you for the comment, Annette, I think we're gonna incorporate that. I don't see any more digital hands, Jim, do you have any thoughts, comments, concerns, feelings, sentiments? Sounds good. Mistress President?
Yeah, I do actually. I'm under goal thirteen. Page thirty-five. Where it says street trees, it says Carlton maintains an approved street tree guidance document. With instructions for citing planting and caring for your tree, and there's also a list of approved tree species. That contains blah, blah, blah. Have we adopted a street tree list? So, so at, at the time when this is approved, then it will, some, some street tree list will be adopted. Can I, as just a caveat? I, Jennifer and I prepared that, if that's the one they're adopting, I'm not sure.
That's the one that has gone up for review.
Okay, so can I add as a caveat, as I was looking over that, over the week? I realized that I included an ash species in there. And that was before the Emerald Ash Borer was a big news thing, this has been a while ago that we did that, and so I would like that deleted, it's Frexus Pennsylvania. And so can we make sure that gets deleted, because I wouldn't want any of that.
Can you please send that to me?
I will, thank you.
You don't want to try the Latin spelling?
I just want to also recognize that was a massive effort on behalf of Jennifer and Suzie and how much. Planning, I'm sure council and, and staff really appreciate. There was many, many weeks and months of work that went into that. So not only should it be included as amended by Commissioner Terrell, but. Again, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank both she and Jennifer for all of the time and effort that went into that.
Likewise.
Yay, trees. I actually have another comment, as I was going over the. Recommendations. DLCD, sorry. It talks about preserving water quality, groundwater recharge and flood storage functions of wetlands. I, my observation is that even if it's not an actual designated wetland, that our soils. Anyway, the soils that have been developed most recently. Are very impervious to absorption of water. There's standing water frequently in those places as soon as they're, the vegetation is removed. So I'm wondering how we can. Put language in that. Protects soils that are not absorbent and. Protect those from development that impacts flooding in neighboring areas. So I, I'm not being very articulate. So we have a lot of clay soil. And that clay soil absorbs water in the winter slowly as it trickles down through vegetation. When developers develop that soil. It is de-vegetated and then it's also compacted, so there's no soil structure that has any absorbent qualities anymore, it's like squashing a sponge. They're not, well, they're not designated by Department of Wildlife or State Lands as wetlands. But they have wetland indicator species thriving in those areas. And I'm, I'm wondering how we can create open spaces around those lesser waterways. So that we are protecting native species and the water absorption qualities of those areas.
I have a few thoughts, if that's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, one is that I did speak to the author of the letter from DLCD this morning. She indicated that she has forwarded your question about this topic on to the specialist at DLCD. I don't know how quickly comments will be, or thoughts will be provided, so, but I just wanted to provide you with that update. The, my other thought is just that. We might want to consider looking at. And I, I, I don't want to make this more complicated than it needs to be, but a, a map of soils to see where those soils are. I wouldn't want to put a policy in place before knowing, if I were you anyway, before knowing where those soils are. So I know the, the, the scope and the scale of, of whatever policy is suggest, is recommended.
That makes sense, I mean, we have a soil report. It's old, but I can't imagine the soil changes significantly over time. I mean, over geologic time certainly, but I think the report is from two thousand and seven, am I right? And it's included in the reports. I think there's like, I think where JR Meadows was, there's like an amity soil. As I recall. In that vicinity, if I was looking correctly, which is prone to standing water.
I can share my screen with the map that we have in the comprehensive plan. I'll make sure I know.
I can look too. On page fifty-seven of our packet.
Great, thank you, maybe that's an easier way to do it.
And I think it's page four of your background information.
Do you know offhand which of those soil classes?
I think it was the amity soil. Amity soil.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's pretty extensive there.
And, and it says that it's moderate, it says somewhat poorly drained seasonal high-water table.
I don't know if. Mr. White has any recommendations, I, I don't have any recommendations at this time.
Yeah, I'm, Steve, I'm just sort of thinking, it's sort of, a soil, it's sort of. Here we got, we were talking about. Goal eight versus goal twelve on the last question, and now we have a goal five versus goal seven scenario here where. Soils can be for wildlife habitat, and that's kind of in the goal five realm of things there where a city would do. A local wetlands inventory for, for that purpose. Versus a soil study, maybe in the goal seven range there of natural hazards where we want to know. Where there's landslide potential and things like that. So, you know, it, it's a matter of what the study is done to, what, what, what the purpose of that study is and. And to what, you know. What, what rules it follows, so I guess that's kind of generally is understanding where it, it would go. I think one of the things just to know too about this, I don't know if Steve touched on it and how much, I haven't been involved in all the, the buildup to the comprehensive plan, but. What we have here are just goals and policies and studies that we're carrying over. If I'm not mistaken there, Steve, there are no new studies. If I'm not mistaken there, uh Steve, there are no new uh studies introduced. With this uh comprehensive plan amendment, I just want to. Make sure we've, we've, we've stated that in the staff report, and I just want to make sure we're, we're not really introducing anything more. Than uh in, in this, uh, because we, we've carried over in the appendix, which is equivalent to. Uh, the existing uh studies that we have on the record. And um. Uh, and so what we really have are just a lot of, of policies worth updating and looking at. Which provide guidance for what we do as far as decision making in the future and looking at a code update or. Of evaluating a zoning map amendment application. So um, I just want to make sure that we're staying on the, on the page of, of what, what we're doing here tonight and. And adding and subtracting goals and policies. Um, Steve, does that help out or anything uh thoughts on that?
Um, I think that is generally um correct. Um, Scott, uh, we did not, we do not. We did not conduct any new research or uh planning studies. Um, for this, um, although when. And the best example is this natural hazards mitigation plan. Where, where information is readily available, we're happy to, to update the background report accordingly. But in most cases, you're correct, um, Scott, that the majority of um the background reports, the appendix. Are carried over from the previous comprehensive plan.
Okay. And so, you know, policies might be to update the, these studies where appropriate. Uh, if they are mentioned, um, and coordination with agencies to, to update them and that sort of thing. So um. So I, I just want to make sure we're thinking along those, those lines as, or. Purposes of. Of policies and objectives that are shown in a, in a draft form here.
Um, well, so to that point, then I think we should recommend that the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife should update their data. Or our background information since it was dated from nineteen ninety seven. And I'm guessing, um, there's been a lot of water degradation since then and some things that need to be. So, I mean, I, just off the bat, I would recommend having that updated.
Was that uh in, in what particular, um, was it goal seven there or?
Um, it was in the, it was what, in the background information, it was cited sources was the Oregon, was the. Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife's um. Data. For the species that are alive in the creeks and waterways and surrounding areas.
Right, that was in the state uh comments, they said, don't change. That without coordinating with um O D F and W, I believe, I'm trying to look for the exact language. But I think the, the. If, if, if you were to add a policy to that regard, it would be that the city work with O D F and W to update. That background data.
Yes, so, yes, I think that should be done. Because you can't protect it if you don't know what's there.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I mean, part of the reason why all of these background studies aren't updated is because um they all. Cost a fair amount of money um to do the updates, just like your transportation system plan. Update that you're doing right now or a potential future housing capacity um analysis or economic analysis, all of these. Um, studies and, and updates um. Have price tags attached to them, so I just wanted everyone to know it's not. Um. We didn't just choose not to update them, there's a good reason for that, because this, it's nothing that a city um can take on all at once. Um, I think it's wise to kind of identify priorities and um tackle them one by one as, as funds become available and to seek out grant funds to, to help with that.
And Steve, I wanted to um thank you for your work. Um, I understand that this is largely an aspirational document. Then the code is where um these aspirations are turned into process. And into regulation. Um, you know, I, I, I recognize language that I heard from residents, I recognize language that I heard. Um, from everyone here, so I, I really appreciate your ability to incorporate some thoughts into this document. Thank you.
Thank you.
You see, and that's pretty little yellow hands up again, Annette. We saw you go overboard there a minute ago, are you back? He certainly has the word, the, the best appearance, it's on a boat, Mexico. And then, can you hear us okay?
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah, we can see it, but we can hear you.
Yeah, well, I can get a lantern out here, the, the sun setting, but it is very nice. I have to say that we're finally on the same. Uh, book and page in terms of time zone, because Mexico and Arizona. Is one of two states that don't do daylight savings time, and so I've always been an hour later than you guys and. As of Sunday, we're finally in the same time, so that's nice. Um, but also, Steve, I saw that there was that one code coming up in twenty twenty six about. Being down river from dams and whatnot. Well, back in nineteen sixty five, in Carlton, the dam was removed. There was a man-made wooden dam that ran under the bridge. Right where the Public Works uh building is right now. And there was a thing called Carlton Lake. And it was basically a five-foot deep man-made lake for floating timber logs. And it was there for years and years, and it imprinted in the. Brains, the little pea brains of the Canadian geese who adopted that flyway. And generations later, they still come over, they're still looking for Carlton Lake. And if you're a. Map person like I am, you can still find Carlton Lake on some maps. But it did at one time exist. Uh, it went away in nineteen sixty five when they pulled the wood out and said, we're getting rid of the dam. Um, I don't know if that'll come into, into use for you and you have to do the twenty twenty six. You know, uh, impacts of being down river of a dam, but other than that, I don't think we are impacted. The other uh resource um. Here, here again to Commissioner Terrell again, just, you know, if we can update. Because fish data especially that's thirty years old is probably pretty hopeless and useless. Um, but I know the wineries associations have very, very detailed. Soil type maps, which are easily accessed on their websites, so I would look at. The Lamont Valley Wineries Association website, and you can get everything you need in terms of soil types. And since I'm talking to you from the dark, I am going to go down and get a lantern.
Ed, well, and I actually have one more thing. Just because I understand this is an aspirational document, um, on page twenty of the document, um, it's recreational needs. And um. First of all, thank you, Amy, for include, for getting grants to build these little playgrounds for the kids, for the tot lots, double thumbs up. But um, I think we need some parks that have, um, are suited also to other needs, things like. I mean, like I said, it's an aspirational document, so um, maybe like instead of pictures of two tot lots. Can we have a picture in there of an adult park, like maybe skateboard or maybe. Pickleball or something other than just tot lots? Because just kind of so that clicks in people's brains that we're not just building parks for little kids.
Happy to make that change.
Thank you.
I will say quickly that um, while the vision is aspirational, I just want to be clear on this, you know, the. The goals and the policies the city has held to. So um, you know, if we say the city is going to update the fish and wildlife inventory. Um, it doesn't have to be done tomorrow, but that is something that the city, city is committing to, it's not just aspirational. The vision is very much aspirational, but the, the policies and, and objectives are um. You know, the city is beholden to those, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that.
That we really will get by trails and things connecting our neighborhoods. That could really happen. Shaded trees, shaded streets.
One can hope.
Unless there are any other comments from commissioners, oh.
I um. So, just so I understand, one of the other points was that in the natural disasters and hazards, that it was recommended that there be. A specific policy related to each of the, or at least objective related to each of the different. Natural disasters, is that true?
Each, each of the natural hazards listed in that specific document, the Yamhill County document, and specifically the City of Carlton. Appendix to that, or I can't remember the exact phrase, that's what, that's what the state asked for was. A, a policy addressing each of, I believe there's six of them.
Yeah, because I, I just, I really thought wildfires was significant, I mean, even though they're mentioned, I was like wildfires. Like every, every year they get. And it, and it seems like there should be some much more specific language about what we're trying to do to. Not just inform people about the risk, but are there things we should be doing? To like, you know. In building codes and they, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think the wildfire particularly. Stuck out to me as being missing with more specific. More specific policy or, or objective. Um, and then I, I, one other comment, I don't know if this is, I don't know if this is appropriate, but. Um, I know that a lot of the stuff in that appendix in, in like, what is it, exhibit two? Is like stuff that's been pulled from the past. But um, it would be a really good idea to have the schools named correctly and have the right grades in them, because. You can tell it's just really old language when it refers to the elementary school as being a K through eight, which is like K through three. Like it's, I mean, like, that should be, it's like, that, okay, we should fix that. Very significantly different. And then I think it refers to this, the Carlton Elementary, I think on like page. I know page thirty three referred to it as Carlton, Carlton Elementary, and I think shortly before that it referred to it as a. K through eight. So just, I don't see like changes we should be able to make in the back.
Can make those updates, yes. Thank you.
I, I think those are my main ones and then other stuff.
I've got, I've got a few, um, so uh, goal one. I'm talking about, um, you mentioned that there uh, the, how well attended were the community conversations? I'm just curious on that piece, um, and also the summits, do you have kind of a ballpark?
Um, the community conversations were done with a variety of different standing groups, so um. I'd have to look back, uh, you know, um, maybe someone in the room who did one of them could say kind of who they did it with, but. Uh, who they conduct those with, but they were mostly done with standing groups like. Um. Uh, a rotary group or uh, someone did uh, talk to the people who walk, who they meet at the dog park every day. But others are more stand, you know, more formal groups, like a chamber of commerce, or I'd have to look back to see the exact groups, I can do that in just a moment. So those could range anywhere from, you know, five to twenty-five or thirty people. Um, the first community summit in particular was standing room only at the fire station. Um, so I would say, again, we have a record of all this, I would say there was uh definitely in excess of fifty people. Um, subsequent um summits probably had more in the range of thirty or so, I think each.
And how did you communicate about, um, how did you get the word out about when those were happening, the summits? Because I do, I do recall, I attended the first summit, and I do, I do recall getting a mailer. But I don't, I don't recall ever seeing any, anything about, about the others, so I'm just curious, did you use the same method for each one of the summits?
If uh, I, the city staff was uh in charge of publicizing the, the summit, so if someone. If Amy's there, maybe she can comment on that.
Yep, and I think I've disclosed this before too, so we did a mailer. Um, but due to cost, we don't do that for everything, it's one of those things where we kind of prior to prioritize. How we use that, so everything after that was electronic, in our website, it was in newsletters, it was in tidbits, it was. On water bills, it was, um, you name it, everything else that we had. Um, but the postcards were only used for seminars.
What was that, the most well, well-attended? I'm just curious, if you're looking at your methods and. That one had twice the amount of people than the others, you could.
Potentially, yeah, I don't know about this, the stakeholder meetings. I didn't do any of those, so.
Sure.
The, the community conversations.
And those were the community conversations open to the public, or they were just, just the groups that were invited to them? Just curious.
Um, what was advertised, um, so different methods, one. Um, the project advisory committee identified, um, and with our assistance and staff's assistance, as many potential groups. Um, as we could, that might be interested, um, those groups were, uh, we reached out to those groups. Um, to see who was interested in, in hosting a conversation. In addition, we prepared a community conversation kit. Um, and publicized that through um the methods that Amy mentioned. Um, so that any, anyone in the community who wanted to have a conversation, even if they didn't want someone to come and host them. Um, they could host a conversation themselves, selves, I think in the end, a lot of people. Um, just choose to participate through the online questionnaires rather than um doing something more formal or inviting people to their house or whatever. It might be, so there was those multiple different avenues of participation, and I think a lot of people just choose to do the online survey avenue.
Sure. Um, so just looking at, uh, if we could look at policy one under goal one. Um. I'd like to suggest possibly adding in something, and I think I saw it under, but I can't, I couldn't quite find it when I went back to look, but. Adding some sort of verbiage about leveraging our community groups or partnerships to assist in increasing our reach and ability to communicate with community members. Um, I think that we saw, you listed a similar type, um. Uh, objective or policy in, under one of the other goals, um. Maybe it was the economic development, if I can find it, I'll, I'll say so, but um, I think adding that as. Another obje- objective there under policy one, I think would be helpful in terms of getting the word out when we do have. Um, these types of conversations or making communities decisions.
No, why won't you say that again?
Which, I'm just, what, what was your word? So it was po- uh, policy one, just adding an objective that says, uh, leveraging our community groups or partnerships to assist in increasing our reach and ability to communicate with community members.
I love that.
Um. And then in terms of policy two, under that one. Um, where do we find the citizen involvement plan, or is that something that's not yet been created, or is that? Is that a plan that's listed somewhere?
Sorry, just catching up on the page, on the policies here. I'm, I'm looking for, can you repeat what you're looking at policy two?
Policy two under goal one.
Yep. Engage citizens to obtain their opinions in all phases of the planning process and employ strategies to reach underrepresented populations.
Oh, okay, well. That's incorrect. What I, what I'm referring to, I guess, is actually, so it's part of goal one, where it's talking about the citizen involvement plant, citizen involvement plan.
It's objective two C.
Oh, the objective two C, okay.
Page twenty of the packet. The last of the objectives that are agreeing.
Excellent.
And it's, it's just, it's, it's probably one-third of equivalent, but you said employing. And it has written here, we see the word promoting, is there any?
Wait, I think we're talking about a different one.
Uh, you just mentioned policy two, and after the comma, he used the word employing, and it's written as promoting, that's what it was.
I see.
Because that's what you were.
Looks like my PowerPoint uh is wrong in that.
Well, just the, the, just right under the, let's see, it's page. Nineteen in the packet, but page five of the plan. So the, under factual base where it says, does it, citizen involved initiative, citizen involvement plan.
Okay.
So is that a developed plan that's somewhere that's listed, or is that, or are these bullet points? The plan, I'm just trying to understand what that, what that means.
I hear what you're saying, sorry, I just wanted to kind of ground myself in where we were in the document, so. All um cities were required to develop a citizen involvement plan at the time. Of comprehensive plan adoption, which for most cities, I can't remember for Carlton, but was in the late seventies or early eighties. Um, I do not know what the state of that plan is for Carlton.
But under objective two C, policy two, under that, under goals, policies and objectives. Um, it says, as the Committee for Citizen Involvement, the Planning Commission will need at least once per year to review public involvement activities.
Correct.
Would be listed in the plan, I think that's referenced above, but to my knowledge, do we have a plan, or is that listed somewhere where we can? Review what's. What the activities are?
Yeah, in my um experience and understanding of Carlton and many other communities, there, there is. Many cities no longer have that. Many cities no longer have that. Uh, community involvement plan, however, what cities do have, like we did for. For our, this process is, we, we had a public involvement plan for this process. Um, it's not, uh. It's not the original, it's not, and it's not, it doesn't apply to all matters, but it is source material that, uh, us. That the Planning Commissioner, City Committee for Citizen Involvement. Could review along with other public involvement efforts over the course of, you know, on an annual, over the course of, of, of a year.
Sure, and I'm, and I'm, I'm familiar with that process. I guess what doesn't make sense to me is if we're going to call out specifically a citizen involvement plan. And there isn't one, then why are we, why is that included, I guess, or why is it called that?
It's a state requirement, uh, maybe it would make sense to add a policy that the city create, uh, uh. Citizen Involvement Plan, but I mean, it's part of the statewide planning goal, that, and that's why it's included. Or maybe updated if something exists somewhere.
Yeah, if, so I would make a recommendation then, if the city does have. A citizen involved with plan that's reviewed, if it's something that's reviewed annually. And the Planning Commission is the advisory committee to that, that, that we do that, so. Just under goal six, um, in terms of the storm water management, um, there. In your presentation, you made a comment about, um. That it would be up where stormwater management would be inefficient or not feasible. What would, can you give an example of where stormwater management would not be efficient or feasible?
And, and to be clear, um, this is talking, that we had a lot of conversation about this with the PAC. And the desire to, for the most part, have storm, stormwater managed onsite. Um, this is not my area of expertise, I don't know how much Scott knows, but there are certainly, um, instances where, uh, more. I don't wanna. More regional, um, stormwater management techniques are preferred, where you're kind of treating stormwater from several. Sites to collectively rather than on each site, and so when, when. On-site stormwater was kind of like mentioned as the way for the city to do stormwater management. I know we, I talked to people and we suggested that so, in some cases, onsite is not the best way to do it, so we just wanted to create a little flexibility there. In case city, uh, public works or whomever determines that another method is, is better suited. That makes sense.
Um, and then, see, so, uh, goal seven, in your presentation, you talked about eliminating, um. The, uh, I, I think it was the state's recommendation to include. Let's see, the, the FEMA, uh, said about the FEMA.
Yep, the.
Populations.
Not eliminating by any means, not eliminating. This is a new requirement from, from FEMA that, um, the city needs to meet. By, uh, January twenty twenty-six. And all I'm, and I, the city should definitely do that. I was just stating that as part of this update that were, that is before you today. That that not be included, that that be a separate effort coordinated with Yamhill County and other jurisdictions within the county. And, and, yeah.
Is that something that could be articulated then in this plan, just be? Because, you know, I, I also work in city government and I understand that. Well, that's not until twenty twenty-six and. How long it takes for city governments to do things, that's just right around the corner, and so it feels. A little bit odd to not at least reference that piece, at least that we're be working in partnerships. It seems prudent to include it and not, not necessarily leave it out from these recommendations.
I think it makes a lot of sense to include a policy that says, you know, update the. Then NHMP, uh, by January twenty twenty-six, um, to respond to, you know, new FEMA requirements, X, Y, Z, I think, yeah, definitely.
Um, and then, let's see, my last, my last comment, and then I'll be quiet, let's see, or, uh, goal fourteen. For organization. Um, policy four. Does this include, um, park and trail opportunities and development?
Using intergovernmental agreements, Yamhill County and other public agencies as needed. To establish areas of mutual interest and coordination procedures relative to urban growth management. We had a policy in the goal eight section that talked about. Um, I think paths and trails and coordination with Yamhill County. I hadn't thought about that relat-, I mean, I don't see why this couldn't refer to that as well. Um, I think typically it's meant to refer to areas that are inside Carlton's urban growth boundary, but outside city limits. That those kind of urban growth management areas that are still. Under county zoning and jurisdiction, but are kind of the next. The next area that will be urbanized by the city of Carlton, that's typically what these policies refer to. Um, I don't know if Scott has any thoughts on this, I, I hadn't thought about it relative to, to trails, and, and again, there is. Uh, a policy to that effect in the goal eight chapter, um, but. Scott, do you have any other thoughts on that?
Um, yeah, I, if it is, I'm looking at policy four under urbanization. Urbanization often relates to, you know, the, the future expansion of the city. Uh, it certainly has to do more so with looking at the urban growth boundary and looking at. Policy four, and I would read that, you know, it says, policy four for every use, uh, intergovernmental agreements with Yamhill County. Other public agents are needed to establish areas of mutual interest and coordination procedures relative to urban growth management, so. That is more so the interest of the city ensuring that, um. Uh, there are, u- usually, in all of the areas inside the city, uh, we, we have. Inside the urban growth boundary is incorporated to the city, so it's not the, the problem of looking at some. Properties that are inside the urban growth boundary that are not incorporated, where an intergovernmental agreement is key. Uh, and the county is held to, uh, certain, you know, I wanna say, uh, you know. To, to notify the city if there's a, a partition or something like that in that instance, um. I'm thinking if it is related to. Uh, trails and things like that, I'm, I'm thinking more so in, uh. In goal eight would be appropriate. I think we can use the same policy there, you know. If it's not, is it there, I, I don't know if we checked it to it, thinking it's, it's a good one. If it's in the recreation. But I'm hoping it's there already, since, um. Or need. Yeah. Yeah, coordinate policy three hundred, coordinating with adjacent, uh, jurisdictions to plan and grade for parkland and recreation facilities in general there. Uh, adjacent jurisdiction would be Yamhill County.
And the objective refers to local county and regional trails.
Okay, we could also add to that as well, policy three.
Steve, I was just gonna say, I don't know if it's my iPad, you, you sound very. Not muted, but like your microphone is very soft as compared to everybody else's. I keep playing with my volume going up and down so I can hear you.
We can. Sorry about that, is that better?
That's better, thank you.
And then your microphone is working.
Of course it is, it's an iPad.
Thank you very much, it's excellent comments. Were there, uh, any other supplementary? Um, comments to add before we open the hearing? Hearing none, seeing none. This hearing is now open for testimony for those who would like to address the commission on this agenda item. Is there any person or? Sorry, is there any person who would like to present oral testimony online? I see. Former Commissioner and still beloved citizen, Robin Gek.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for this meeting tonight and for this opportunity. I just want to reiterate something and reemphasize. The, if you take a walk, I'm. Down along Han Creek. Where JR two is being still developed. You walk across a street. That is blocked right before the creek. And there's a barrier there, and it says, road to be continued. There's a sign there, and it's a flood plain. And I appreciate. The need for development. I was really happy to hear the state ask us to be. Extra vigilant, I mean, I'm putting my own words in, forgive me, you know, I'm not great at this, but. That they're saying they want us to try to. Protect the wetland areas. And. I, uh, I understand the concerns with getting. The state involved in having a new, new, uh, assessment done. And I wondered if possibly the Yamhill Soil and Water Conservation District, they work with farmers. Around these issues, and I just wonder if they might be an asset for us in determining it. It breaks my heart honestly to walk there and think that there's gonna be a road going through there. And, um, development in that area, uh, I just pray we don't do any fill. Um, so anyway, that's just my comment, and, um, I, I hope that. Out of, I just, my hope is that out of, that we don't. That we don't take the measures that we need to take to keep places. That shouldn't be, that should be protected and not developed, that could be parks or whatever. That we have enough teeth in our comprehensive plan or enough clarity is perhaps. What we need and support with other. Whatever entities we, we need to, to make sure that those places are protected. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any, um, benefit to specifically mentioning Soil and Water Conservation District as a partner? As opposed to, or may get under. Should be six, maybe air, water and land quality resources. And because it is, I think it was the first in the state Soil and Water Conservation District, so we have benefited. Pretty strong, um, background, I've worked with them. Probably five or six times over the last decade. Very responsive. If we wanted to specifically call them out, or at least. I am. One of these possibly. Objective three A, collaborate on significant environmental quality, protect measures in neighboring communities and. Stakeholder organizations such as.
Yeah, I want it.
Kudos to Robin and Anthony because. They're a gem of a resource and we'd be fools not to avail ourselves of them, so I would like to see them specifically. Added as a resource in that said paragraph. Thank you, Robin.
Is there anybody else? Uh, Robin, are you done for the evening? That looks like a yes. Is there anybody else out in Zoom land who would like to comment? Hearing none, seeing none.
I would just. Like to say that the, as far as getting the key together and letting him know when important decisions are to be made, would be. Better, okay, I come from an old school where there wasn't a whole lot of computers. When I first moved here in Carlton, back a long time ago. When there was a development that was gonna come into town. And they actually told the people about it, it was usually held in a meeting over at the grade school. And everybody would come there in that little auditorium. And the developers would be out in front of everybody, there'd be engineers there, and then there would be the. I think, it usually went on for three days, three or four days, so everybody would rotate through. And I remember that very first development, uh. That they did, that J Melos did. If there hadn't have been input from the community. They would not have, and this is over there at the end of town on the west side, that Barmadoff Road over there, they would have never. Developed walls around that wetlands. Or even left that wetlands if the community hadn't sent anything, and they also wouldn't have made a park. In that area for the kids, where the concrete runs through there. If, if the community hadn't had input, and they would have also narrowed down to where there was only gonna be one road out of that development. Well, now there's two roads out of that fellow. And it was because of community input. And sure, the developer had to pay more to do it, but. It's what everybody wanted, but if everything, if there's no reach to the community except through computers. Digital. Most people at my age, I don't know about the younger folks, but most people my age, we don't spend a whole lot of time. You know, looking to see what the city's gonna do on the computer. If you get a flyer though, that's a whole nother pick, a whole nother, uh, story. But when I put the post office, you know, have some of the businesses put, put it up, if you don't wanna make a whole bunch of them. And send them out, but it wouldn't hurt to send them out a water bill, after all.
There's a poster in the park, a place for posters.
Steve Pedretti, is that you? Cuz I can't see who's talking.
That's me, how you doing?
I'm good, I rec- I recognize your voice. For the record, you're supposed to say your name and address so that we know who's talking. Cause I can't see you in my little camera.
Old residence since eighty-four. Yeah, so, uh. That was, you know, that whole development situation, the, the cit-, the citizens were in. Nation and knew what was going on, so there was no buildup of hostility, you know, amongst the citizens for what kind of stuff was going on there. But if there's, you know, COVID came, and nobody wanted to meet, and everybody was doing Zoom land. And so, but, but Zoom land doesn't get to everybody. And it needs, you know, anyway, I just thought I'd bring that up, cuz I think. Over the years, it's getting better now, but over the years, there's been a lack of communication, direct communication for what. The Planning Commission and the city's gonna do. As opposed to what the citizens actually know what they're. Because in the meantime, you know, and then you hear these fancy projects get started and going. But then the streets are all falling apart, and you're going. Well, what's, you know, and so, you know. There's a, there's a disconnect, there really is a disconnect there. And so, I'm just saying, you don't want a bunch of hostility coming out of the. The residents here, cuz they have to drive to work every day, and they're driving on these roads, you know, they gotta come home every. And, and, uh, so, I just say that there needs to be a little better communication about what's going on, and I can see. By you folks here that we're in pretty good hands, I, I see some real intelligent, smart people here. That are doing a hell of a job, I'm, I'm impressed. I haven't seen the, this kind of participation in a long time. So, uh. I think you guys are on the right road, but I think a little more communication with citizens would be a good idea.
Amen.
I do think the city does a good job of maintaining the one at the post office, right? I know a lot of the city regulators who come in on the, the backside, not on the. It's like Main Street, please, what is the road out here, is this domain? Oh, when the, the one that faces the, the drop-off box, that entrance always has a sign, I've never even noticed, is there another one by the other entrance?
No.
No, there's, no, there's not.
Yeah, and so I just, I notice a lot of locals tend to go in that one, so that might be.
Well, you know, they can be taped on the backside of the doors.
Yeah, we, we, it's federal property, so. We're gonna have to call.
Yeah, but the water bill, she is center of our.
For the water bill, is there, is there kind of an acknowledged cost? Is that just, is it labor plus addition, is that done in-house or? It's done out, out of house?
So it depends on the livelihood, you know, it depends on whether or not it's a separate piece of paper, which is why I love, as we work within what we can. I've been named it before, it's just like a.
Is, is it, I've never received one of those. Cuz I'm, one of those out of town billbillies, but is it, is it, you know, like, on the bills? Easy to see, does it pop out or? Oh, it does. Appreciate the comment. Just involve them as a primary goal for us. Neither one of you done?
Chris Fugey, three ten, Wesley King. I have a few things. One of the best and worst of those two meetings, you know.
That was the one meeting she blessed.
Well, those things are going on. I mean, you're excited. And then, um, thank you all for all the work. I never realized how pointless it is when you have three people in a meeting. And you say to try to get attracted to it, I've been a part of it where they. Tried so hard, and I think if somebody in this town doesn't know that once a month there's a meeting. Because it ticks me up, I always thought, why doesn't it become, why doesn't it become, and they, every meeting they say, you wanna involve the community. But the community's not trying, so I feel too sorry for that situation. Everyone knows it's once a month, you know, you gotta try. And then what else? Oh, I made a picture. I don't know that guy on TV. About the, uh, verbo bed and breakfast. I did that some thirty second street by my house. That is a verbo, 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 verbo. And that's a bed and breakfast. And when the weekend they have their cars. This guy lives out of town. This guy lives out of town. And they're all quiet by town, aren't they? But what you can tell when people say families matter here. We have no power leading to help. We have no kids to watch grow. Nothing. On this block, I walk down there, there's nobody I know. Nobody. And then all the cars every time. And I don't care, but I think we should have a cap five hundred feet, a thousand feet. I really would beg you to put a cap on this. We will have no family. We'll have no town. I know people move, come, go. It's ridiculous. This is right by my house. When do you stop that? We will have no families.
We have some planning code updates that are going on right now. And so I think that would be a helpful comment. I think we've run into property interest rights, existing rights versus other ones. People see precedent and there may be presumed precedent that, that makes it a little bit, um, you know, I think we're, we're dealing with state constitutional legal requirements.
Five hundred feet.
Yeah. So I, I don't know if we could have a red drive app, but
I know first come, first served after the foul, but there's a whole
Who's way to be lying.
Sucks, you know, sucks. Oh, please, please. I'm one of my people.
Yeah. Chris, can I also encourage you to go to council meetings and make that same statement at council meetings? Cause they actually have control. You don't yeah, no, we can advise, but we can't make that policy.
I don't know.
So, yeah.
The regular
Yeah. Yeah. No, I mean, just again, yeah. No, you're great. That's great. I just wanted to, yeah, I know. And I love it that you brought it and we are, I mean, that is part of
and I see you guys so mad and it makes me crazy. How hard is it to go once a month? I wouldn't want, no, everything I want.
Tim, for my edification, is there somebody that could put that picture drawing in front of the camera so I can see it?
Oh, yeah. That big thing somewhere between Monet and Passo.
Here, oh.
You may want to zoom in a little bit.
Short-term rentals. I don't know.
Yeah.
We're fine.
It's top left, yes.
Okay.
That's perfect. Yeah, I would, I would say that a picture is worth a thousand words.
So that's true. That's going to be our whole town because it's a white community, which I don't have a problem with, but I do have a problem with neighborhoods. Oh, yeah. Ex- neighbor, extinction.
Maggie Bowman. Maggie Bowman, retired school teacher from Carlton Yam Hill District. And I taught one of the K three A.
All of my kids. Hey, Maggie.
I've had, and that's kids. I've had Chris's kid and Steve's kid. I don't live in Carlton, but it's been part of my life the last forty years. I love this town and I really appreciate how hard all of you are working and this is your spare time and you can be with your families. Thank you so much. Like Steve said, we're in good hands. But the communication, Facebook is big. You get your local McMenville Facebook, I'm sorry, Carlton Facebook. Queen or King or whoever's in charge of that, and you tell your community when and where the meetings are. It's free. And they can't say, you didn't tell me. Cause I know more about, I knew about the art and ladies night. When all my artsy fartsy friends in McMenville said, what do you mean they had an art night? Why didn't you care about it? And I was like, oh, gotta be on that Facebook thing. So Facebook is a big deal for communication.
And I know the city has tried to drive more traffic to, because of community notes, something it's called, or my
Community tidbits.
Community, the community notes, the new former Twitter thing. Community tidbits is another mechanism, bringing that stuff that goes up like mail on a weekly basis.
Bi-weekly.
Bi-weekly basis, so. Is that I love living in Carlton or I'm bitching about living in Carlton? I used to break, but that's not oriented. Uh, it's community oriented, but it's not run by the community. And there's a different one from city in Carlton, right?
We do not have our own city Facebook page and per reason. So we've done a couple of things to try to meet that need. We have instituted Facebook buttons on our website. So if you go to our website and see a posting or an article or something, you can hit that Facebook button and post it from your own feed into the community. Um, we do not have our own Facebook page because everything becomes public record, including comments. And so we have to have a social archive backup in order to protect that. And we also have to monitor for comments.
Are you also allowed to post on the, I love Carlton page?
It would take the administrator from I love living in Carlton or you to share it to I love living in Carlton? Yeah.
Yeah, you can ask her. She's one of the experts.
I'd like people to know that's
Yeah.
It could be part of his citizen involvement plan. Some basic needs that really love.
Yeah.
Grant, I think it's, is it, I can't remember his last name, but back at the bunkhouse. Oh my gosh, I know whenever he's broadcasting. So, you know, someone with that kind of regularity can put on these type of meetings. And these are all recorded. So, um, it's always fun to watch Zoom out fact, but there's retrospective involvement, uh, in the extent that people can't make it on time. Continue to push them. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Well, and can I make one last comment? Apparently we're, um, the Citizen Involvement Committee. Um, and we're supposed to meet once a year. I mean, that's what I just read. And I think that's an ongoing policy that we've had. And I don't think we've ever met about how to do citizen involvement. So perhaps we should schedule that into an agenda.
I, I don't remember when that was decided, but I feel like there was some discussion that was like, we don't want to form a new committee because it's hard enough to get citizen involvement. I feel like that, I feel like there was so, I have some familiarity with that, like, oh, we'll just be that committee. But I don't remember what ever happened to that.
When I joined, yeah, planning commission, that was still in there and now it's in the new one.
Yeah.
But as far as I know, we've never done that.
As, as far as I know, we've never done that.
So, um, I, I think that would be a valuable conversation.
Maybe it's something that could be like in that plan that a particular like eh, every June or every September. I, I mean, it can be hard if there's some big thing that has to be heard, but you know, maybe if it's kind of on the schedule, like this is the month that we don't tend to have as much or maybe one of the January or something. Yeah. That, that's, that's going to be the meeting and then it could always be pushed if there's something that needs to be like, well, we're not going to do it this month, we'll do it next.
Say one more thing of, uh, about wetlands and water. If, if the wetlands get destroyed or developed, the water has to go somewhere when it rains. And these, this river backs up and starts, because it gets so much water coming off the mountains from everywhere else, not the farm fields, because farmers, you know, they drain their field through the river. Then pretty soon it just keeps building up, building up. And then it just got, there's no more drainage and it starts backing up. If you don't have the wetlands for the water to back up into, then you have flood problems somewhere else. That's all. So be careful what you do with the wetlands. It's, they're important.
Yeah. What, what? Yeah. And I think that's why we're, we're going to adopt the, everything that Oregon Department of State lands. Is recommending as, yeah, as a watchdogs. And I think that's an important partnership as well as legal requirement.
Uh, Mr. Faust or Mr. White, any comment from staff to supplement public comment?
Uh, I know, I'll defer over to, to Steve as he's been the person of that has, uh, uh, been with the comprehensive plan here for quite a bit of time. Um, I, I do know, I think, uh, I think what else, I'll stay here is that we certainly have, um, uh, a lot of, uh, things that came to us late. Uh, it was nice of, uh, Department of Land Conservation and Development to at least give us a heads up that some things were coming. Uh, we did not get the same from the Department of Transportation. Uh, I do want to make sure that it's entered into the record here as this was not provided to the commission. Um, uh, a day earlier, say on Friday, I think we sent the L C D, right? Is that, okay. So we did, we did forward the uh, the L C D's comments to the commission as soon as we got them and, uh, about, about three thirty-ish is when we received ODOT's comment. So, uh, Mr. Chair, I can read this into the record. I think somewhere in the script there, it says if there's any written testimony, if you would like me to read this, um, uh, into the record, I can, um, at this time or
How many pages is the number?
Uh, yeah. Twenty-six. No, it's, it is a half, half page here.
Uh, if you want to get a summary, I think we can include.
Okay. Yeah. And I don't know. Uh, yeah. So to apologize, but yeah, but, uh, this is, uh, ODOT has, uh, basically, uh, they were given a, a, a copy of the notice. They were, we were required to do that by, by the way, by, by state laws to notify any affected agency. And ODOT says they have no objections to the amendment as proposed, though we do have some recommendations regarding policy language related to coordination with ODOT. Specifically, the bulleted statements below are shown deleted or modified in the comprehensive, uh, plan table matrix, uh, and, uh, but just want to make sure that they're not leaving them out. Uh, uh, important detail about the coordination needed in development, uh, review roles for other projects. And so uh, their first, first bulleted item, item here is goal one. What they really mean is goal twelve. Um, so that's a typo. Um, so goal, uh, twelve is where you'll find the preserve function capacity, uh, level of service and safety of highway, state highway forty-seven. And then they have some policies here, which, um,
Yeah.
I'm not sure if they were taken out. Steve can, can correct me. I don't, I know he, he had as much time as I did this sort of like, what, what is this? What is this? Um, so, uh, I don't know. I'll, I'll, uh, Steve, did you have an opportunity to take a look at that, uh, what uh, ODOT is requesting, uh, be retained from what was subtracted?
Yeah, I actually included that in my presentation. Um, I can share my screen again. Um, to go over that and just to make sure that we're on the same page. Um, oh, give me one second. Okay. This piece right here, Scott, right? Uh, preserve the function capacity level of service, safety of state highway forty-seven, and then the, the objectives or policies underneath that. Is that what you're referring to?
That, that's it.
Yeah. Uh, I think, you know, yeah, um, I, I recommend that it's fine to add those back in. I think in general, oops, as I mentioned um, earlier, kind of our approach to comprehensive plans is to try to, uh, you know, consolidate, uh, policies where possible to make it more accessible for folks. This was one example where like all, I think all of these policies are, are covered in the policies we have, except these refer specifically to state highway forty-seven. Um, you know, a reasonable person could say that you need to have these, um, policies specifically around highway forty-seven as opposed to all, um, you know, more, a more general policy. Um, so I, again, we're fine with, with including that.
Yeah. That, that's it on my end.
Excellent. Annette?
Um, Steve Faust, not Steve Pedretti. Um, I would be interested in your take on those bullets. And again, appreciate all of your efforts as well as the city planner to incorporate those into the packet. It's, it's quite an undertaking, but in your opinion, is there anything in those three bullets that's excluding truck bypass actions?
Um, not the way I read it. The way I, what I see here are, well, preserve the function capacity, level of service and safety of state highway forty-seven. I mean, I think, uh, yeah, I haven't been as involved in these, uh, ongoing highway forty-seven, um, um, issues as you
Feels very blankety to me.
Right. At the same time, I mean, wh- where my mind is, is like any, any bypass is still going to need to preserve the function capacity level of service. You know what I mean? Um, you're, you're going to have to coordinate with ODOT. Um, if that, if any bypass is done, um, you're going to have to coordinate around land use decisions. You're going to have to conform to ODOT standards and practices. So I don't um, while I see what you're saying, how it feels like a blanket and what, you know, is there, is there something specific that would prevent the city from pursuing a different course of action that they want to? I, I, I don't think so. Um, I don't know if Scott has any thoughts on that.
I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading something into it that isn't there. It almost feels a little
I think my, my, my guess, my assumption is that as the main ODOT facility going through Carlton, they wanted to call it out as, yeah, this is the, this is the highway that we are, you know, that it's our facility and you need to acknowledge in your comp plan that you're
Yeah.
us on the facility.
Okay. Cause I, I, I have been involved with it since, I don't know, thirty years now. Um, and it existed on paper for a very long time. And it just, you know, we've gone one step forward, two steps back. Um, it, it, it felt a little hand slapping to me, but, um, I mean, if, if Scott doesn't object and you don't object, I guess, I guess we leave it alone. I don't want to make a tempest in a teapot, but it, it seemed almost like they were excluding like this project that's consumed us for years and years and years. So those are my comments.
I don't read into it. I, that, and city attorneys here is, as well, to look at this. I don't see anything and
I, I also, I don't have any concerns. I see what you're saying to that.
Well, if there is no more testimony or additional comments from staff, we will close the public testimony portion of the hearing. And the planning commission will now continue with deliberations. No further testimony will be permitted unless the public hearing is reopened. That's only if you pay me off with chips and salsa. So for deliberations this evening, is there any commissioner that would like to start any comments or we've, we kind of deliberate in situ. So, um, assuming that there may not be further deliberative energies, a, a motion would be welcomed. It is found in the bottom of page, says seven on here. Is it the tail end of?
And kuda, kudos to Steve for having the foresight to have that nice little draft motion. But I'm, I'm waiting to see if anybody else has further comments.
This is on page nine of the packet. It is correctly labeled as page seven of the staff report. It goes page nine of our overall ninety-five page packet. There's a sample motion there. Um, and do we need to incorporate any, specifically incorporate any of the changes that are
Yeah.
Yeah. So the motion, there is, yeah, obviously we've had some additions here. And so it's up to the planning commission to decide if you're comfortable in providing staff latitude to add what you have, um, voices. We have both, um, state comments and then we have commissioner additions. Um, one of the things I do want to mention, we have in motion right now, uh, for the next planning, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting of April eighth is the hearing for the development code. Um, and so if you choose to continue the hearing tonight, we'd have to schedule it for a special meeting. Um, with all of the additions here, I, you know, I truly don't want to pressure the commission to, uh, to, to make a, a decision. We want to make sure we get the policy language correctly. Uh, uh, so, uh, the one option is to, uh, uh, make a motion for continue instructing staff to, uh, incorporate what has been stated this, this evening by the state agencies and uh, by commissioners. Sounds like you are all in agreement with each other from what I, I could tell. And I have some notes and I have, uh, I believe Steve has taken some notes and so we'll take our collective brain power to make sure we, we've got them correctly. Uh, but that is one option. Um, uh, but it would be a special meeting and it would be on, um, March twenty-fifth is what we sort of looked at too, and be a question of whether we have a forum for that. Uh, the other option is to, uh, make sure we have it all. Uh, the other option is to uh, make sure we have it all right, uh, and. Uh, so sometimes that's, that's a little bit difficult, but if we had a couple of. Of uh, additions for, for policies, we could just kind of reiterate that and maybe work on it on, on the wordsmithing and things like that. But I counted about eight of them, uh, so um, it may be that you want to do a continuous.
That's going to be Suzie, so I will not be present, or for the woman, the eight. How do you guys feel? I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have a problem with us reciting. The general summary of the eight that you've identified and assuming that the other commissioners would be okay with it, I think. I'm fine giving you the latitude. This is, this is a document that's going to be going before the, the city council as well for further. Consideration requirement community input, so. Given the, the bandwidth that the planning commission has, I, I would be fine with, personally, it would be. Deferring to staff.
Okay, and I want to make sure to, is, is Steve, are you there? Have you taken a lot of notes here too? I mean, I've been. We, we always have, this, this meeting is recorded and so sometimes it goes, no, that's commissioner's uh, said this, I know it's, no. So we, we can always go back to a recording and I've done that many a times to make sure it's, is done right. So.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to concur with your list. If you want to read them, I just wanted to note that there are two um, commissioners with hands raised as well.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Bandy?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I'm not muted, good, okay. So thank you very much. I agree with the chairman on this very much. I think we can let this roll into the. Advisor's hands basically and move forward. Um, I think we all kind of concurred on everything we talked about. I don't see any objection. Uh, that's my two cents.
Thank you so much, appreciated. Annette?
Um, I just wanted to also stink, uh, thank Steve, uh, well done. Um, I. My general comment is I would have liked to have seen more policy recommendations. Like actual recommendations rather than just saying we should recommend and saying what they are. Um, there has been a lot of discussion. I think we are um, in accord as a, as a planning commission. Um, I wonder though, Scott, if there's a third option, because it seems to me we've done this before. This is a very important document and, and uh, also taking into consideration the last minute. Contributions by our partners that we just went over with, with ODOT and et cetera. Is there a way for you to, because you know, asking you to just snap your fingers and, and. Promote this or produce this lengthy product? Is there a third option, Scott, that you could work with Steve to get these changes incorporated into the document? And then electronically resend us the draft? And that we just do an electronic vote? Do we have to have meetings upon meetings upon meetings? I think that, you know, in its, in its present form, it's, it's good. Um, but I'd like it to be. Best. And I'm hoping that, that, that there's a way that, that we.
We have to have a meeting and that, we can't just do it by email.
So that was city attorneys.
Yeah, so the third option, um, um, good idea, wish, wish we would have something like that and maybe in the future we might, uh. So uh, yeah, but we would, we have to uh, yeah, with public uh. Yeah, public meeting laws and uh, all of the new process under state law. Uh, yeah, i- i- it's really the, the, the two options there.
So if you, if you go ahead and you wordsmith it. And if there's something that any of us on the commission or I guess the general public feel isn't right. We could attend the council meeting and make an addendum at that point, correct?
Correct. Is this something, do you two reading unless the unanimous on the first procedurally? For comp plan update?
So, yeah, I, I believe at the council level, there's a first and second reading of the ordinance, so just. That, I think that that's the city attorney is nodding his head once it becomes an uh. Matter of adopting an ordinance for this purpose, but uh. For what we do for the planning commission, it would be just an order uh, document that uh. Planning commission hereby recommends uh, the, uh, the council adopt uh, this. Uh, the exhibit A as amended and so uh, yeah, you can either provide staff. But the latitude with fingers crossed that we got it right, or you can continue the hearing, again, date certain. It would have to be date certain and time certain. Uh, time limitation, well, yes, because we want, this is uh, where we are kind of rolling into a separate public hearing. For the development code on uh, April eighth, which would be the normal next. Commission, regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, uh, and with that, that's, that's very long, uh. Uh, with lots of. Yeah, so, so we want to make sure that that date is reserved solely for that, for that item, so. Uh, so uh, the, yeah, the uh, March twenty. You could do that.
Let's just wrap it up.
So, yeah, because the, the, the DCLD recommendations, those are really clear. Like, I don't think there's any margin for error on those. And then the rest of it, the rest of our recommendation, maybe I talked too much. Like, was there too much I added?
We could, uh, so Steve would show the, the slide that was second to last slide that had uh, the items that were up there. That would assist in the motion uh, with respect to the state um. Items there for the most part, and then the uh, motion maker would also include um, as uh, directed by. By the commission this, this evening. Um, that's kind of a broad stroke of one, but we would uh, we would have to go back and check. The um. The meeting notes, parent meeting notes and go back to the report, the ref, uh, the reporting here, just to make sure we captured everything.
We're going to hold you to it, Scott, you and. I'm going to make a motion to, to a drop, uh, to. And to approve the draft motion as shown on screen. And hope that Scott and Steve don't screw it up. Um, and if not, we'll, we'll be at the city council meeting to amend it. Nice job, Steve.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second as presented on our screen right now, shared in Zoom land. Uh, reflecting the amendments heard today, all in favor? Nests to the sky. Commissioner Bandy, is that an abstention or frozen with that? Recommendations to the city council subject amendments, which uh, Steve and Scott will be putting. Thank you guys for, thank you Steve for the thoughtful, uh, extensive work. It's been a pleasure witnessing this from afar and. Occasionally in closed orbit, so it's very much appreciated by everybody. That brings this agenda item to a close. I invited anybody else earlier to have citizen comments. There's a chance just to revisit that. Uh, if there's nobody in Zoom land, guys. There's a perpetual request for this. To have uh, short-term rentals, and that will be considered at all times. Um, any commissioner comments on any matters I mentioned before that I won't be here next month, depending you get to wear the hat. For a very short meeting.
It won't be a screw this on you doing Anthony, honestly. Um, I actually, I just have a comment, just a random comment, um. It would, it would be true to say that I worked very hard on, and Jennifer and I both worked very hard on the street tree list. However, I want to make it really clear, I'm not married to that list. I just want a good list. And so if, if city council chose to choose a list from City of Portland or City of Eugene. That would be absolutely fine with me as long as it met the concerns in our comprehensive plan. That this, the street tree is diverse and it is um. Accurate. So that's, that's my input on that and I, I really want to be clear on that, like, I, I, I understand why. People might say, well, she, like, just what does she think she knows, which, fair enough, fair enough. You know, I'm, I'm not a working landscape architect or landscape horticulturist this time anymore, so, yeah, fair enough. But um, I, so with all due respect, I mean, I appreciate people saying, yay, you made a good list, but. You do what you need to do to get a good list and however that comes out, as long as it's a good list. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. Jim?
Yeah, I just want to sort of do a little top to top to what Suzie just said, and I think. The two of them did an amazing job. And I don't think she should be little or how impactful her work was. And I just say, if the city council doesn't follow the leadership that she provided there. Whoa on them, so that's all I can say.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Commissioner Bandy. Any other comments, concerns, uh, any voice from our lovely mayor?
No, I think you guys gave the council their marching orders.
Hearing no further commissioner comments, bringing this evening's meeting to a blissful end by motion. Will wave goodbye as our signal of affirmation.
And that, show us the stars. Show us the stars, Annette.